The agenda calls for adoption of the minutes of the meeting of December the 2nd, 2019. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Come on through.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the same. Motion carried. And I'd like to note that's unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is the hearing for property located 200 North Columbia Street. In a public hearing, I hope everybody can hear me okay with this mask on. If I can't, I'll take it off. With a public hearing, we'll give you an opportunity to come up and speak and ask people first to speak in favor and then oppose. And we'll rotate back and forth. And when you come up, I would ask that you please give your name and address. This is a public meeting. We need your name and your current address. I encourage everyone to speak that would like to speak. But if, in the essence of time with this many people here, if everybody speaks, please, I ask you to be brief in your comments and remarks. Please, don't say the same thing over and over, I guess is what I'm trying to say. You know, if somebody's already said your part, just let it go. Has the hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Would you like to give us a presentation?
Yes, sir, I will. Would you like for me to call the roll first?
Let's do that.
All right, Mr. Driscoll?
Here.
Mr. Alton?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Strickland?
Here.
And Mr. Grant.
Here.
All right, everybody's here. We'll get on to the next.
Yeah, I have a little trouble reading over the top of this.
I know. Everybody's having problems. But as you know, this property is what used to be the Annabellum Inn. It is in the overlay to where, by right, you can go ahead and ask for special use. It's in the district where the mayor and council had set out you could go ahead and ask for it. They are asking for sorority. We're 15 residents. We have checked, they will be able to get the parking. And really, that's it. Unless any of y'all have any more questions. Yes, sir, it is. It used to be, it's the Annabellum Inn currently now, and they will be selling it to the sorority.
It is an historic building.
Yes, sir, it is. And it was used as the Annabellum Inn previously. The use was for, you know, groups. Any more questions?
No questions. Then we'll proceed. Is anyone here to speak in favor of the special use? Sure.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Ian McMullin. I represent the Zeta Tau Alpha Fraternity Corporation Housing Corporation and the Martin, Kim Martin family, the Annabellum Inn, Inc. I'm a lawyer here in town at Waddell &amp; Associates. I've been practicing for about 10 years, and I'm a resident of Milledgeville. Grew up in town. I live at 130 Lakeside Drive. I've been here all but five years of my life, so I know many of you personally. As Ms. Graham mentioned, we're here on a special use request for the property located 200 North Columbia Street. It's currently the Annabellum Inn, Inc., and is owned by Annabellum, I mean, the Annabellum Inn is owned by Annabellum Inn, Inc. The house was built in 1890. It's a typical Victorian, very pretty house. It's at the Columbia West McIntosh and Columbia Street. It's been operated as a commercial bed and breakfast for at least 20 years. I'm certain that it was a bed and breakfast when I was in high school. And as far as zoning, we just want to point out that, of course, as Ms. Graham said, it's Zone SRF-1 and is in the overlay that was established in 2002. We're here asking for the special use to house 15 young ladies who are members of the sorority and, by extension, students of George College and State University. 15 will be residents, and they will use it for residential purposes and their chapter meetings, so the sorority chapter meetings when they have functions, initiations, meetings, business meetings, et cetera. Just a little bit of information about the Zeta Tau Alpha fraternity. It's called fraternity, you notice, and that's created some confusion. This is what we would colloquially call a sorority, but for historical purposes, when it was founded in the late 1800s in Farmville, Virginia, it was known as a fraternity. The Zetas have been here in Milledgeville. I was in college at George College when they first came. That was in 2004. I think at least one of our audience members that I grew up with was one of the initial members of that chapter. And in 2005, the Zeta chapter here began running from Robert Benyon at the time and the house directly across the street, which is 201 North Columbia Street, which is currently owned by one of Richard Simms' entities. They have approximately 180 women who are all George College students. And, you know, I think it's important to point out that many, many of the Zetas that come through are both very involved in the community while they're in college as students and after. I certainly know firsthand, just because my wife happens to be one. And the, so I know all the, many of the Zetas in town. So, for instance, I know there, we have the education director at Lockerly is a Zeta, and the, at First Methodist, as many of the girls that worked in the nursery and the children's program were Zetas. So, this is a group that, in my opinion, and I'll say a decade's worth of very well-informed opinion, is very, very beneficial for our community, has been so since 2004. The Housing Corporation, I think, is important for what we're asking. The Zeta Tau Alpha Housing Corporation was founded in 1977. It was the, it is the oldest of fraternity, sorority, housing corporations, and it's the largest. So, I guess the question would be, what does that mean for you guys as the planning zoning committee? And I think it's, what that means is this. They own 113, own or manage 113 facilities across the United States. They have a net worth of $34 million, and they spend between $5 and $10 million annually on upgrades and maintenance to their facilities across the country. They're highly organized. I can tell you they're very efficient from recent interaction with them. And so, they run these facilities well. Each facility has, as I understand it, a layer of hierarchy that oversees each facility. So, they're very closely scrutinized by the Housing Corporation. The Zetas have a zero tolerance policy for alcohol at any event. I just don't think you're going to ask for a better fraternity-sorority tenant, as far as I can tell. I can't, no one can seem to recall any issues whatsoever they have had since they went in across the street 15 years ago. The other thing that I think makes a difference here is that, you know, many of the houses that are used for fraternities and sororities of town are owned by landlords. And there's nothing wrong with, you know, renting a sorority house. But with a highly organized housing corporation like the Zetas have, they're going to, it's going to look a whole lot better, pristine even, when they own their own housing. Because, you know, their best interest, I think they're probably one of the most vibrant, if not the most vibrant, sorority that we have in Milledgeville at the time, right now. And so, their best interest is keeping this house to be a showpiece, so that, you know, they attract the highest and best quality women to join their sorority. So, that's sort of the background, and I've given you a good bit there. On the compliance issues, I think it's, Mervyn had already mentioned, J. Smith went out when we first, and I think she passed these out, a four-page handout, very eloquently numbered, 1 to 4, and sharpie. And so, you can see the plan for parking, the first page. Page 1 is what exists out there. That's the As-Bilt survey. You see the existing parking and the pool. If you go to page 2, what you will see is the proposed concrete parking pad. What will happen is that the pool will be removed. There's a little pool house that is right off the edge of the pool that's going to be removed as well. And then the parking pad will be placed there that has adequate parking for 15 girls off the street. You go over to page 3, you'll sort of see the site plan. This is the artistic rendering. Yes, ma'am?
I know she just said the pool house was to be removed. This is, it's just, uh...
By pool house, what I mean is if you go, and maybe I'm using the wrong nomenclature. There's a, on page 1, there's a building called a framed storage building.
Just a little storage, okay.
That's why I'm calling the pool house. That's going to be removed.
But some of the other big structures.
The other big structure will stay. That's correct. And so, on page 3, the illustrated site plan, that kind of gives you the rendering of what this is going to look like. And you can see that we've had a landscape architect go in, and that would be on page 4, to show what we're going to, what the plan is to put there. You see boxwoods around the parking, a vegetative bear on the neighbor to the north. So, I think it will look very nice, and that's their goal. I was pleased to see that they're using historic plants, boxwoods and tea olives. So, that'll be certainly compliant with the feel of the rest of the town. And as Mervyn pointed out, we've already gone through the fire and safety inspection, relatively minor changes, and don't feel there'll be any issue whatsoever and comply with all those requirements. That's all the sort of technical items I've got. I would like to say, from just a purely personal level, having been married to, when Ruth and I got married, I knew she was a Zeta, and she said, "Oh, there's a Zeta chapter." And we lived in Macon at the time. And what I didn't realize was that very shortly thereafter, she was going to become the recruitment chairman for the Zeta Tau Alpha fraternity here in town. And what that meant was, every August, she disappeared for about two and a half weeks. And then roped me in to doing things like going to First Methodist Church and getting a stage. So, anyway, my father and I sort of got the brunt of that. But it kind of worked out well because it gave me the chance to be back over here for, during August. And then we moved back five years ago, and that has only increased. I do think that, you know, I'll tell you, just in, I wasn't in a fraternity or sorority in college, but just in what I have seen, her mother's a, I'm sorry, her aunts are Zeta, her grandmothers are Zeta, the whole family are Zetas, basically. And having gotten to know many of the Zetas here in town, which are married to lots of local people here, so we've got, there's sort of a whole coalition of us floating around. And I'm, I think it's really impressive what this organization does. I think they're a really, a real asset to the community. And I think, from planning zoning standpoint, you know, if they're allowed, one thing that has sort of seemed to be a sticking point for this board in the past was the idea that you've got these developers coming in and buying everything up. And that's not what we've got here. There's no developer. There's a nonprofit organization that looks to promote the college, the community, and their own lofty ideals and goals. And so, you know, I feel like planning zoning ought to really take a lot of comfort in the fact that this organization's producing these women that are real assets to the community, both while in college. And you can look out and see some of the ones who are certainly have been assets to the community after they've finished their college careers. And to allow this group to take that, you know, control their own destiny with their own property, and to put the money, the savings that they would have been paying in rent, both back into the community, into this house to keep it looking good, and into these young women that they're trying to mold for the future, I think would be a very admirable move on behalf of planning zoning. Are there any questions?
Do you entertain questions?
Sure.
Are there any questions?
They gonna be living in the house? Is it 15, 15?
15, yes, sir.
They ain't just going to be needing the things like that.
There'll be 15 residents plus the meeting. Yes, sir.
Is this house equipped for student living in?
It is, it is. I think we counted up, there's, what, eight bedrooms?
Eight and seven bathrooms.
Yeah, I think it can easily handle 15 residents.
You know, five safes there? How you get out?
Yes, sir. We have had Eddie Bresel came down for the, did the fire inspection, and there, I know Mervyn has copies of that. Relatively minor changes. Some of the stuff is just making sure that the attic fan is closed, that the transom's... It does not have sprinkler system, and that's not required.
Does not require?
That the fire department, fire marshal is not requiring a sprinkler system to go into this property. No, sir.
But they do know this is the historic ambition.
That's, that's right. Yes, sir. Carl?
How many properties do the Zetas own or lease in Milledgeville?
One. In Milledgeville.
Just across the street?
Just across the street. Yes, sir.
Parking, and I guess a twofold question for, also for Mervyn to take a look at. You're going to put, you're going to squeeze 15 cars in that backyard once you cover up the pool? Are they regulation spaces, and there are 15 of them that can go in there?
They are. J., if you'll look at the page 2, you'll see...
...by professional survey. And you will have it. J. Smith did it, and they were all up to code, nine and a half, I think, by 20. That's the professional. He laid it out and said you could do it.
So, we're going to concrete the whole backyard and put parking in? I guess that's a concept.
Yeah, well, it's not, if you really look at it, it's not much more concept concrete than it already is if you consider the pools concrete and the current parking pads concrete. It's, you know, maybe a few, few more spaces worth of concrete.
Is the big building going to be left in the back? Is that, what is that use, planned use?
Right now, it's currently used as an additional
Orders.
Space for boarding. And that's, it will be a room. We were sort of talking as we came in, there was thought that maybe the president, sorority would use it as a residence with, you know, sort of a conference room, like for meetings. But yeah, it's a potentially residential, residential use, yes.
Would it have a living adult?
Yeah, no, no, I was going to say, I didn't think so, but that's not required.
Have you requested a curb cut to extend, to widen the entrance and exit?
The, based on J. Smith's plan, I don't know if there's going to be an additional curb cut. Let's see. Yeah. I was about to say, we could sort of figure it out, but it doesn't look like, if the curb cut is, I mean, the entrance is going to move, I guess that'd be west, slightly west.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You said when there's going to be no drinking in there, when you were making your comment.
Can I address that one?
Sure, absolutely. Well, the special question was there.
How you going to keep the people from drinking? You know, students, they going to have something to drink. How you going to do that?
I will defer to Leah. She is, and she would like to answer that.
My name is Leah Osment. I'm vice president construction for Zeta Tau Alpha Fraternity Housing Corporation. My address is 1431 Graymont Lane, and I hope this doesn't get me in trouble with you. Tuscaloosa, Alabama, real tight. I saw that Georgia hat. So, Zeta Tau Alpha has a policy that in our residences, be they rented, be they owned, be they through the university, we have an absolute no alcohol policy, tolerance policy. And knock on wood, you know, yes, if they're going to drink, they're going to drink. But we've never had any issues really blatant of people. The sisters are very respectful of that, and we have an honor code where our sisters will report. We have local women here who are general advisor, right here. We have a housing advisor that lives here, right over here. We have a woman who lives in Atlanta who is an area housing advisor. We also have our vice president collegiate that's in Atlanta, and one of our fraternity house corporation secretary treasurer. So, there's lots of ayes in and out of this chapter. And I think these women would tell you that if there's someone who is blatantly breaking a policy, they're going to get total, and we have a judicial process, and they're very aware of it. So, it's kind of a trust policy, like an honor code. But like I say, if somebody's going to break it, they're probably going to break a whole lot of rules, and they're going to get out for a whole lot of other reasons. But we have not had a big problem with this chapter, fortunately for that. I think if Mr. Sims could tell you, we've been very good tenants and very loyal, and that's just right across the street. We've been very accommodating to his request of do this, don't do this. So, I think essentially, we just would be going from being renters, but actually stakeholders in your community in owning this property. And I will tell you, we've invested $13 million at the University of Alabama in housing. We just put $5 million in at the University of Florida. You know, if you'd let us come in here, we'd build you a beautiful home. But we respect the fact of Milledgeville's historical value and the beautiful homes that you have, and that's where we'd like to continue with our women, if at all possible.
How many more homes do you got here in Milledgeville?
How many more homes do we have? I don't have one because I'm in Tuscaloosa.
I'm talking about for this.
Zeta Tau Alpha just has one, the one house.
Just the only one. So, the closest one around here would be where? What they own?
That we own would either be University of, would be University of Georgia in Athens, I guess. Yeah. I'm trying to think. Yeah, because Georgia State doesn't, they have housing there at the school. So, we own a house on Milledgeville, Milledge Street in Athens, Georgia. So, that's the closest one.
Are these the same young ladies who oversee the old hall house across the street?
Yes, these are the same women that have overseen them. Yes, sir.
And they'll have responsibility for both?
Yes, sir. And actually, we won't, we won't double up. We'll, we'll move them out of 201 when our lease ends, and we'll move, if we get past, we'll move into the 200 Columbia.
So, your intent is to move out of 201?
Yes, our intent is to no longer lease, but own. Yes, sir.
So, just to clear this up, this is not, am I the only one that's miked?
No. I think you are.
Okay. So, y'all are not expanding, you're moving?
We're moving.
Across the street?
Across the street. Yes, sir. Just right across Columbia, where we have been renting for, gosh, 15 years? And we've just decided that it's better to put the money back in our own pocket than give it to somebody else, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Mr. McMullin.
Sure.
Do you know, and maybe if there's somebody here that can speak to it better, why the property's being sold in the first place?
I don't know, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speak for them that, you know, they're in the process of selling their, their end. I certainly could speculate that COVID-19's not helping at all, but in the hospitality industry, but that's purely speculation, and I'm not, so I've sort of gotten the impression that the current owners are, you know, starting to inch toward retirement and don't want to necessarily run a bed and breakfast anymore. But again, that's just sort of my speculation. That's not, that's the impression I have gathered.
So, if, I mean, if a single family were to move in that house, you know, like what, what do you think it would, I mean, what would that look like for a single family of four?
Well, it'd be an awful lot of wasted space for a single family of four. And now, I'll say this, I'm 35 years old. I practice law here in town, and I cannot, I cannot fathom the cost it would take for me to move my family in. Now, maybe if I was, you know, 70 years old, retired, and had a great pension, that might, might change the equation.
It's not realistic.
But yeah, of course, you're right. For a single family with young children, you know, we're doing good with our house in Carrington Woods, and we're fine there, so.
But Andrea was a single family just before I got here. Mary Jones and Alan Jones lived in it at one time, and it was a single family, and they had children. So, that kind of answers that question. But, in your previous, it was my understanding, and I'm not sure it's true, but the owners were having difficulty getting someone live there to run the bed and breakfast for them on a full-time basis. And that was becoming more difficult, so I think that's one of the reasons I decided to partner.
So, the business is not a success, and they're trying to salvage?
I think it was, but it was diminishing and...
So, and the point that I'm getting at is that it's not realistic for a single family to purchase a home like that. And a business had it and tried, and it's not working. And this seems like a better option than going the way of a St. Bridge House.
Depends on whether you love big homes or not, because some of us do own big homes like that and are very happy with them, so it's very possible.
Yeah. I would just say there's not enough to keep them from burning down.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Okay, moving right along.
I want to say, Your Honor, that's all I have, but I realize that I'm not in court, so that's all I've got.
The chairman. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there one, anybody wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone else to speak for opposition?
I'm not sure if it's opposition, but I'll speak. More addressing concern.
Hi, my name is Richard Knapp. I live at 517 West Hancock Street, one block over. So, my concern is, I walk my dog past that thing every day. It's just a block. I walk the dog around the block. To answer your question, yes, it's very feasible for a single family to own a house. Mine is just around the corner, and it's about 50, 200 square feet. So, it's very feasible. So, in fact, all these houses at one point were pretty much single-family residents. So, that answers that question. My concern always is concerning the parking situation. In the Annabellum across the, the Victorian, excuse me, across the street from the Annabellum Inn, there supposedly is enough off-street parking. Yet, on a regular basis, we see parking on Columbia Street all the time. I have tons of pictures of that. Have pictures of the side street. Is it McIntyre or?
McIntosh.
McIntyre Street? I see that all the time. The problem is not just for the 15 residents that are there, but for the times when you have guests. Okay? So, the other concern is, as we increase these from single-family house to put in 15 people in some of these houses, and you already have the Victorian that has, how many residents? Anybody? 15, probably?
It's the same group, they're just moving across.
Right. So, my concern is what's going to move in over there across the street? So, you got 15 people vacating it, 15 people probably going to move in there, some other 15-person group. So, you already see, now you got 30 people. So, this has been happening a lot. Since my house, I purchased it in 2008, we've seen a demographic shift from downtown, a lot. And what that's caused is single ladies, old couples, it reverts to a landlord. They in turn, they put in six, eight, 10 students. It's the parking situation. If you go to Columbia Street on a regular school day, I'm not talking during the COVID-19 pandemic right now, but if you go on the street, you will have people parking on the sidewalks, in the sidewalks. I'm constantly going around vehicles all the time. That's my concern. It's not necessarily against this, it's just a general shot across the bow with parking in general. It's not the 15 parking spaces and the whole concrete pad that you're going to pour in the backyard. It's the guests. And they have guests. They have big parties sometimes, non-alcoholic parties, as always, of course. That's why I got all the solo cups and the beer cans and the bottles of whiskey sitting in my yard or all the way down. If you walk down Columbia Street on a regular Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night, you will find solo sippy cups and everything else. And it sure doesn't smell like Coke or soda, so. That's my only concern. I'm good with possibly a sorority moving into the, into the old Annabellum Inn, but I'm more concerned about what happens now across the street in that end. So, it just, again, the parking situation's going to be horrendous. I've had noise complaints several times. I can never sleep with the windows open during those early springtime hours and late falls because of the parties that go on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays. Okay? And that's during regular, it's not right now. It's a nice, quiet town right now, trust me. But during those regular times, that's where I've complained, I've had noise complaints. And again, it's not necessarily against this sorority or another fraternity, but it's just in general. And the problem is, it's the enforcement. I can tell you, across the street from me, I've, my wife has repeatedly called the Milledgeville Police Department about the illegal parking on the yellow curb. It's not being enforced. Nothing downtown in my block area ever gets enforced. It takes multiple calls for noise when the parties go to midnight or 2 o'clock in the morning, and my kids have school the next day, my young children. So, and I work the next day, and I have to get up at 5 o'clock in the morning. That's my concern. So, on a Thursday night when they have their... So on a Thursday night when they have their loud parties, that's what the concern is. So this just, how would you say, causes additional personnel to be put in that small-block area right there in additional issues with parking. And I'm not sure if this really addresses this, because Richard Sims addressed the parking supposedly across the street. That didn't help. And I got neighbors and myself that can, that can state that, I got pictures to that. So my concern, again, it's more concern, is what, is that going to be sufficient parking? I can answer that question already, and you know you can too. 15 cars is not going to work. They're going to have some guest parking that they need to consider too, because the kids do pull up, there's additional people that pull up. So when that happens, where's the parking going to be? So when you take a regular class day, 15 cars parked inside the, the Annabellum Inn, and then all the street from the staff and faculty that park down the street from Georgia College, that's what you also have to look at. So that's more of a concern that I have. Like I said, they're, all the time, they're parked on the street, they're blocking the crosswalk, I've had that happen numerous times. There's yellow curbs, red curbs now, they still park there. Not recently, but they still do. So that's my major concern. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Since you live in there, how often do they enforce, enforce the law in the area by the people?
Extremely rarely. Extremely rarely. I got, I can show you right now, within the last, since Friday, I've complained about the illegal parking across the street from me. That hasn't happened. Nothing, nobody's come by yet. I got videotaped of cars parked there for three or four days in a row, not moving. So that's going to happen here too. It happens all the time. It's not just the parking on the street, it's the parking when they widen, illegally widen the easement that the city owns and park on the grass. And then you start seeing mud parks and stuff right there in front. And that's right on the corner, catty corner across the street from the Annabellum Inn right now. That happens regularly, but even though they got off-street parking, they park right there in the front yard. Nobody does anything about it. For two years, I've complained about it, it just looks bad. Not saying like I said that these people are going to do it or anybody else, but they have already. This sorority specifically has parked on the street. And like I said, I've got tons of pictures of that. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do you know of a college town that doesn't have cars parked on the street?
Okay. As a resident, roads are for, for driving on. You're turning roads into parking spaces.
Yeah.
That's free parking. Hold on a second. That's got to be paved and everything else. My taxpayer money goes to paying for parking then, okay? I park off the street. So when you're, when you're turning roads that are for vehicle traffic into parking spaces, and McIntyre's one of those, then you're taking away the flow of traffic, okay? It makes it more difficult. Jackson Street, just down the road, just the Lex block over, has that problem. I cannot drive a vehicle, a single vehicle down there because the parking is on both sides of the road.
And you've called the police about it?
I have called the police.
And did you meet with them? A lot of times when you call the police, they'll say, do you want to meet with the officer?
I have requested that, that's correct.
So then what did the officer tell you after he looked at?
Very few times have they actually come out, but they have done it.
So they just ignore your call altogether?
In generally, yes, they do.
They just, so you call the police and you file a report?
That's correct.
The police, Milledgeville Police Department?
That's correct.
Doesn't come out?
That's, at times, they do not come out. Most times, they do not.
Wow.
They haven't come down the last four days.
I've never, I've never heard that.
You want to see my video system? I got it pointed down the street.
No, I don't care about the video, I would love to see the logs where you called the police and the police didn't come. I mean, that's a huge issue that the chief of police needs to address.
Yeah, you can, you can see me about that afterwards. Yes, I agree. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I would like for your questions to be directed to the chair and not to each other. I don't want to see this back and forth anymore, okay? Let's direct any questions you have to the chair, and then we'll get you an answer.
I'm Sheila Hoynes.
If you're going to speak, you need to come up to the, and give us your name and address.
I'm a first grade teacher, I have the voice. I'm Sheila Hoynes. I live at 104 Riverbend Court in Edenton, Georgia. I was the very first chapter advisor when Zeta Tau Alpha was formed in this college community. The adults that worked with these girls worked very diligently to make them understand and appreciate they were living in a residential community, and we needed for them to be respectful of their neighbors. The people who owned the inn came and spoke for us on numerous occasions to say how, what great neighbors we were. As far as hearing that there were parties every Thursday night at the Zeta house, I don't believe so. Zeta does not party at the house. These girls may go other places and party, but they do not party at the house. The house may be used for committee meetings. The houses now are pretty much not big enough to have chapter meetings there, so we can't even have our whole chapter at the house. Yes, we do have rush go through in the fall, like all of the other sorority houses do, and there are probably three days where all of the new students on campus who are going through rush, plus all of our sorority sisters, may be in and out. But we can't get everybody in the house at, at a time, so we take turns having those girls in and out. I worked with those girls very closely for six years, and my husband will tell you, I gave my retirement to six years to be with my sorority sisters. And those girls, they respect this community, they give to this community, they, they're not all, they're not perfect, no, they're, they're college kids. They're not perfect. But they, they will be respectful to the community just as they have been. That won't change because we own a house instead of renting a house. And so I would just like to say, I just, unless there can be some proof shown to me that it was our Zeta girls having a party on Thursday night, I just don't believe that's happening. Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Since that is a historic addition.
Yes, sir.
And they got policies and procedures. Did anybody else, did y'all, did y'all ever go to a committee and ask them to change the policies and procedures?
What policies and procedures to change?
Historic addition got policies.
Oh, no. We, we came in to abide by those. We, we did, when we first were trying to become a sorority house there, we did ask that the planning and zoning and the city council allow it to become a sorority house because that was kind of unprecedented at that time. This is like in 2005.
Yeah, but that's the same thing you asked for, that's over legacy.
It's a new one.
It's already in the over legacy.
It's already in the over legacy.
It's already in the over legacy.
No, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, are you for or against?
What's that?
For or against?
Oh, against. Well, me.
We'll decide. We'll decide.
Mike Cruz, I live at 120 North Columbia, so Ms. Flake's house, and then my house.
What was your name?
Michael Cruz, C-R-E-W-S. I mean, we're talking about 15, I mean, let's just say we're counting 30, because that house that they leave is going to get filled. I mean, that's no-brainer. And then, right now, there's already no parking during a regular school day, sorry, I get nervous up front, even though I teach all day. So right now, there's already a problem, not saying today, but during a regular college day, there is. As Mr. Knapp said, I mean, you got cars parked in the grass. Once a week, I live on Columbia, drive on Columbia, work up in Edenton, so I just drive up and down Columbia every day. And it's every week that fire hydrant, the, the crosswalk is blocked by a car, I mean, every week. So, and that's already now. So imagine 15 more cars, or 20 more cars, or however many cars we're going to have there. So that's a huge concern of mine. We have a four-year-old daughter and we're always walking around, so. Obviously, you know, Milledgeville, sorry, the area hasn't had the best track record these last couple of years with just traffic in general. The young lady that got hit last year was the daughter of a lady that I worked with. So I just, I mean, with the traffic and parking already as bad as it is, adding 15, 20 more cars, I just, I'd hate to see what could happen next.
Any questions?
That's it. I mean, don't get me wrong, the ladies are nice, I mean, I'm not going to say anything bad about them, but it's the parking, that's the driving.
I have a question, Mr. Cruz. Have you ever called the City of Milledgeville Police Department and them not respond?
I haven't, but just because I've heard on how they haven't responded, but...
Really?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Anyone else to speak in favor?
Against? Against, please?
Against. We, we go back and forth, I'm given opportunity, is there anybody to speak for? And then we'll do against after the next.
Deedeman, everybody. My name is Tiffany Bain, and I live at 455 Kings Road here in Milledgeville. So I arrived at Georgia College here in Milledgeville in 2005, a little bit by happenstance. And as I swear to my mother, and I swear to y'all, I fell in love with the town first, before I fell in love with a boy and ended up sticking around for a while and raising two pretty nice kids here. I was a member of the sorority that is in question today and actually lived at 201 North Columbia. I lived with about 12 other women. And a couple of things, I just kind of want to contextualize for you and share with you what it was like to be a resident there. I grew up in Scriven County, Georgia, and my childhood had six kids and two grownups, and we lived in a house built in 1898 that I watched my parents, I mean, almost make themselves crazy trying to maintain for six kids. And even that's a big, that's a big family by today's standards, really. So living in the sorority house was not a major culture shift for me, because I was used to being around a lot of people, used to being in a cold house, you got to wear socks because you will get splinters, there are drafts. So I think I probably came into it a little more prepared than some of my other sisters that maybe had lived in newer builds their, their whole lives. But I found it to be an incredibly familial experience. I know to say 15 young women are going to live together seems like an overwhelming thing, and at times, it is an overwhelming idea. But I found it incredibly familial. We hosted our Bible study meetings there, we hosted, you heard Ms. Sheila talk about committee meetings. What you are doing today gets practiced by these organizations. I learned Robert's Rules of Order. I failed big and was supported well by, by these women. And these relationships that we're teaching and cultivating last forever. So you got to hear from Ms. Sheila, I was one of her first kind of group that came through. She came to my wedding, she met my babies when they were born, and when my mother-in-law died last year, she came to the funeral. So I can't really express to you how committed this group is to one another, and they are wonderful neighbors. I know that college students are fun to work with. I am currently the dean of students at a school here in town. And I know they, they, they're learning, and sometimes their learning comes at the risk of mistakes, and, and I am aware of that. But this group holds them accountable. I've volunteered with this group as a, as a grown-up in their conduct process, and it's fair, and it's just, and it's right. And I think you will enjoy continuing to have them as neighbors downtown. So any questions for me?
Questions?
Awesome, thanks.
One wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I usually don't speak, but I'm going to speak this time. My name's Karen Pennington, and I live at 211 North Columbia Street, across the street from the Annabellum Inn. I have lived there since 1992. I raised three children there. One of them still lives with me. There is no way that 15 more, 20, 25 more cars can exist on that block. I cannot tell you how many cars, I know other people have mentioned it, cars. My elderly mother can't come visit me because there's nowhere for her to park. It's just unbelievable. I really wasn't even going to get into the Greek situation. I have worked with Sergeant Buggle, so I have worked with police. I had severe problems, death threats, I have, I had to put up several, I'm just nervous, pardon me. I had to put up several cameras in my yard because I was getting threats from the fraternities across the street. I called in so many times for the, for that house that burned down, to try to say that, I knew something terrible was going to happen. They've been having bonfires across the street. I called the police, the fire department came, it was a major bonfire. I thought it was on fire, I thought the house was on fire. I could see the flames in the trees. So it, I've seen everything. There's nothing I haven't seen, I promise you. I could talk, if I wasn't so nervous, I could talk for 24 hours about it. It's, I've lived there since 1992. It's just, I hate seeing it. I hate, I get in the mail, I constantly get, please, we want to buy your house, oh, please. I don't want to sell my house. I love, I love my house, I love where I live. But I don't want it to be Greek Row. I don't want that. All these homes, private people lived in, I mean, these were families that lived in these homes. I've been there long enough, there was hardly any rentals around me when I moved there. It was just a wonderful family, it really was. I've taken such good care of my property. I'm the one who put up the four-way stop. I had that put up, working with my councilman, because someone was going to get killed. So I'm the reason and my councilman, that that four-way stop and that walkway is there. I saw five cars get completely totaled, including mine. It was just a matter of time before a person was going to get killed. So, I, I mean, and that was years ago when I, we put that up. So I can't even imagine more cars. I really can't. I think that's all. Any questions? Thank you.
You got a question?
I was just going to ask, could I speak again?
Are you speaking for or against?
For. One more time, it's your bandwidth in front here, Leah Osman. I know they keep talking about adding additional cars, but what we're talking about here is, we can't control what Mr. Sims does with the property once we leave that property. And when she's talking about bonfires and death threats, I hope to the good Lord she's not talking about a sorority, which is a very different entity than a boys' fraternity. We struck, we have much stricter guidelines, rules, we have more adult participation in the local town, on a regional level and on a national level. And the realistic thing is, if we don't get to go across the street, we're staying where we are. So our 15 cars are staying on Columbia, irregardless if we get to purchase and be a shareholder in your community, or we continue to rent for Mr. Sims, who probably will try to come in and buy the property and rent it to a sorority, and you're still going to get your 15 more cars. So my point is, is that, I, believe me, I have two 19, I have a 19-year-old and a 22-year-old, both daughters. My husband volunteers for the fraternity that he was with at the university, and he will tell me things about beer slides down the foyer stairs, and I go, oh my God, we would just string them up by their toenails, we would throw them out, their parents would pay for it, and he's like, oh, it's just normal, we're just refinishing the floor. So I hope to goodness she was not speaking about sorority bonfires, because I've been working with this chapter for five years now, and I've never heard anything about us burning, because we'd be up here burning all of them by the way of their membership. So I just wanted you to know, we're going to, those 15 cars of Zetas are going to stay on Columbia, one way or the other. We would just like the opportunity to be a vested shareholder in your community. And we will abide by all your rules, or else I'll be down here... And we will abide by all your rules, or else I'll be down here getting on them. So, any questions for me?
Yeah. So all of the members that are going to live in this house, if it's approved, are going to park in the backyard. None are going to park on the street as I do now.
I would hope so, because we're providing them a place to park, and we are going to instruct them that Mr. Smith did this survey, and we're going to have spaces, so I would assume, I mean, I can't guarantee you that they are, we are going to instruct them to do so, and I would assume our house advisor and our-
They'll have a parking number.
They'll have a parking number. So, you know, I mean, I'm, I mean, I drove around today, and there were a lot of random cars on the street, but I live in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, and when you go to where the students live, there are random cars there.
Yeah. I have another question, but I need to ask one first. Is this house going to be issued resident parking permits?
No, it's not necessary, they don't need it. And they do, Mr. Sims does have the parking too, for, you know, what he requested, and this house will too.
Are the two illegal signs on McIntyre Street going to be taken up?
What illegal signs?
Parking, resident parking only. They're not in the ordinance.
I doubt it. I think that was put up there for the Annabelle Men, because, you know, the Annabelle Men, it actually can hold more than 15 occupants, and they had a problem with parking. And if my memory serves me correct, but don't say, I'm not sure about this, I think we did put some up for the Annabelle Men. I mean, I can check into that-
Yeah, you put two in.
-but I am not going to say they will or they won't come down, because like I said-
They're not in the ordinance, that was my-
Like I said, the Annabelle Men sometimes would have, you know, like 20 or so cars there.
Yeah. And again, the discussion's going on, it's going on all the meetings we've had, and I'm sorry, David, if I take up time, but it has always been a historic district, and most of the people in my neighborhood, and I live in the historic district, have the very same problem. And some of it is lack of enforcement, and some of it is just just regarding what was approved. Example, across the street in Mr. Sims's house, that was for 10 people. And we approved a parking lot in the back of that house for 10 people. And you've got 15 in there.
We have 13, actually, and we have three street permits that we have as well.
Yeah, that's what it's approved for.
Yeah.
So this-
They had permits then?
Yes.
Yeah, they did, but the new one will not.
We won't need them because the amount of occupants-
Yeah, because according to the ordinance, you are allowed to get off-street parking if it's in the residential area. Now, I don't know where these signs are you're referencing, if they-
They're on the corner of McIntosh and North Columbia, two of them.
The only thing I can do is check. I don't know if they're legal, you say they're illegal, but I can't, I'm not going to answer-
They're not in the original ordinance, and they weren't added.
Down, we'll take them down if it's our house.
Well, no, you can't take them down. They're on the city path.
In the heat of the night, they might go hard.
And like I say, it has been and continues to be the difficulty that the permanent residents within the historic district have, and that is with the excess parking. And I'm not going to point my fingers at the Zetas over in the old Hall House, but they are offenders also, they park on the street, don't have parking permits. And use one of the examples that was given earlier in the statements. Then take a look at 141 North Columbia Street. During school, those two cars parked in the front yard on the city right-of-way all day long. So it is enforcement, and that's one thing that the residents complained to me about, and that is, lack of enforcement in the historic district for the parking, which just exacerbates the problem. And again, I don't blame Zetas, they're doing what they're told to do. I would just want to help the neighbors eliminate part of that problem, and it is a problem.
I have a question. Do you think that adding more spaces to downtown Milledgeville would hurt our parking situation or help it?
Do you mean like in the center of your downtown?
Well, no, I just mean like, if you're, if you're going to purchase this property, and you're going to put more parking spaces downtown, they're for your folks, but there are more parking spaces downtown than there were before, that it hurts our situation? I mean, wouldn't, here's a better way to put it. Wouldn't, wouldn't you think that adding more parking spaces to in downtown Milledgeville would help get cars off the street?
Cars off the street.
Okay.
And I also think that if, when, before we leave, I'm happy to give you my card, and if there is a problem, since you live in the historic district, you can pick up the phone and call me, and I will call every Zeta in this room and get those cars off the street and put them, I don't know, somewhere else.
And I'll be able to identify them, because we're going to have a sticker-
Because they all say Zeta, that's right, we're proud of it, we're very proud of it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
You got a question?
I just want to say something.
Can I say one more against?
I'm moderate.
Hold on just a minute. Are you speaking in favor or against?
I just want to make a statement on something that someone has previously said, moderate. I don't know.
Hold on.
Not many of those left.
Yeah.
All right.
It's getting light here.
This is a public hearing, we want to hear from everybody, but I'm just trying to-
Yes. Well, my name is Nolly Brown, I live at 421 West Hancock Street, and I would just like to say that someone who has previously made a statement in this, I don't think that she should be well-trusted. She hazed, I'm a part of a Greek organization, and she was preached very much against hazing, and she hazed my organization. She made them crawl around in the dirt and put cover holes with dirt. My girls were not allowed to leave until their hands were dirty enough. They, this, we were told to all be quiet about it. My president and my advisor at the time was not, they were not strong enough to speak out against this, which is sad. But she was a Zeta, and I just wanted to make this available, that we have been hurt by them. And I don't think that it's just, I think that, yes, they're trying to get their house, they're trying to move across the street from a great house already, but that this should be spoken out, and I think this is, I just wanted to make this available, that we were hurt by them.
So what you're saying is, is that there's hazing involved?
Not-
Is that what I'm hearing?
Not within their chapter right now, but within one of the women who has spoken out now for their housing.
Oh, okay. So there's no hazing within the Zetas that you're aware of?
I know what you're going to say.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
But I don't think one of these women should be trusted for her opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I would like to address one point on Officer Four. I'm sorry for whatever hazing or purported injustice may have been done, but I certainly don't think that this board, you know, we have certainly a relevancy question for our planning and zoning hearing, I think that's fairly obvious. I don't think this board should, you know, base a decision based on a personal grudge that one person had against one other person who happens to be a member of the organization that's unfounded and that apparently can't be proved. It is just, want to make that sort of point.
If we can, let's, let's try to keep our comments driven to the subject at hand. I don't, I don't, I really don't want to have any more, you know, any more things like that. Let's keep it to the, whether or not you're in favor of the zoning or not. Yes, sir.
My nerves are a little bit bad now. Brought up was that Mr. Sims, if they leave, he, they don't have any power over that, what he does with it. You guys have power over what that house does now. Right now, that house cannot have 15 cars, the one we're talking about. So right now, we can prevent there being 30 cars in this area.
What was your name again?
Cruz.
Michael.
Cruz, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else speak against?
Good evening. My name is Jake Smith. I'm 25, I'm from this area, I was born and raised here. I'm a veteran, I'm also a student at the college as well. I wouldn't really say I'm like hardcore against. I, I just kind of have some, I guess like this gentleman over here, just some concerns that I want to kind of put in the light while this decision is being made, just either way that it goes. I think, I think, because I've been doing a lot of listening, like hearing both sides, going back and forth. I think, I hope I'm getting this right. I think that the concern is that if this is zoned for the sorority, then, like, yes, all they're doing is moving across the street, and I think the concern is that, you know, obviously, there's a little bit of speculation involved here, but that that current house will be leased just out to another Greek organization, and that's going to add to the parking that's currently there. I don't want to beat the parking thing to death, I'm just saying like, I think that's, just from kind of listening, both sides go back and forth, kind of the, the concern there, as far as just adding to that. I, no, I'll leave that one alone. But just either way that this goes, I, I just hope that the, you know, the committee and the people acting in, in the stead of the city, I hope whichever decision is made, it is made with the understanding that the, the city of Milledgeville and the citizens of Milledgeville are the first priority of the people who are representing us and acting in the government. And I'm not saying that that's not the case going on, I'm just saying, whichever way this goes, I hope that the decision is made with that in mind and through that lens. Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak for or against? Seeing none, I assume we're ready to vote. Do I have a motion? Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Have a second? Get the clerk to call the robe.
Just one second. Mr. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Alton?
Oh.
No?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Motion carries, three to two.
I appreciate everybody coming tonight, and I appreciate, I appreciate you being civil to, to us and to one another. It's important that we have these types of debates. Now this will move on to the city council for their consideration. Is there anything else, any other businesses that need to come before this group tonight?
Now, I just want to thank all of y'all for coming out tonight. Appreciate you volunteering in this pandemic.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you. For this property and-